Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Rainy day. How about them lions? Who are the thump, huh?
Not my lifetime.
Dear God.
Yeah. Get a roll call, please.
John DeBoyer.
Here.
Maureen Bory.
Here.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Here.
Chris Oregan.
I'm here.
Cindy Valentine here.
All right, bill's payable. I will entertain a motion.
Board, I'd like to make a motion to approve bill's payable in the amount of eighty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-two cents.
Support. Okay, motion and support. Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions. On the membership dues again for the assessor, those come out of their pay and then we're reimbursing, right? Or do we pay for their certifications and things? I'm just curious. I don't know. The three hundred and fifty dollars for the Lawton and Campbell?
Township pays for that.
Yeah, township pays for them. We don't.
We pay for their membership and their dues, okay. And then in the legal fees, under building and grounds, we're paying wastewater treatment sewer authority agreements. That's legal fees? Is that for the new Southwater Municipal?
Yeah, that was for our attorney to review it on our behalf.
Okay, well, we paid some for that last time. I think we paid one hundred and seventy-five or two hundred, four hundred dollars. And I thought all of that money was coming from, you know, the sewer fund, not our general fund, not our building and grounds fund. I mean, we are not putting any budget out. I had Harson's Island Transportation Authority ask me about their budget, why they're not getting a budget, but this authority is getting budget money. So I'm confused as to why we're taking that, not from the sewer fund, but the last one was from the general fund and this is building and grounds, so.
General fund is the building and grounds.
Okay, well, why is it coming from general fund when it should be coming from the sewer fund, in my opinion?
Because the authority isn't created yet. We have to create it first.
Well, Harson's Island Transportation Authority has asked for a budget and that's another authority and they're not receiving any money.
That's a different kind of authority and it's not part of the township. It's a sub-
It is.
It's a sub-governmental component.
Well, and so is this a sub-governmental.
In the nineties, when it was created, the township did loan money to the authority to become created.
Well, I just, I don't know. I don't understand why it's not coming out of the-
What are you proposing? I mean, what's your argument? Is it because we don't give money to Haida that we've never been requested? Or is it because the wastewater treatment plant has spent a hu-
It's both. But, I mean, a lot of times I hear, "I don't want to do anything when- when, what's it going to do for the island?" Harson's Island does not use any of the wastewater treatment plant, but their tax dollars are being spent on this. And I thought it was going to come out of the sewer fund. So I'd like to see that moved. I don't know. That's just me. But if it can't happen, it can't happen. You told me everything to do with that authority would be coming out of our sewer fund.
Well, the township is going to be a part of that authority and to be a part of that authority, they have to create it.
Isn't it best it comes out of the sewer tho- out of the sewer fund, which is not the island's tax-paying dollars? Island doesn't benefit from this wastewater treatment plant.
I mean, we can look at that, but.
All right, that's all I've got.
How much was that before?
Well, last time it was one hundred and seventy-five or four hundred dollars. This time it's, I don't know if all of this, eighty-six, sixty-seven, forty-four, eighty-four, and sixteen-twenty. I don't know if that's all of that to Fahy Schultz Birch is all for the wastewater treatment plan authority or what.
We can bring it up to the auditors and see what they think. Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
No.
John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, next we have our supervisors' report. If you recall last meeting, we had LJ and his mom, his whole family was here talking about Angelen Syndrome. And I did contact the road commission and they are working on putting up a special needs sign on Anchor Bay Drive near his house. And I was also just informed today by email that Jay DeBoyer is going to sponsor our, he's our state rep, a bill in the House that will recognize February fifteenth as Angelen Syndrome Awareness Day. So I just want to let the board know that we did have some good of that and some action came out of that. And LJ's mom is very happy about it all. The road commission did put down a fog layer on the middle channel golf course road and Bates Highway on the island. Remember, they did a chip seal and they did everything but the fog seal. And they came back this past week and completed that. The road commission also finished their ditching project on La Croix, which included replacing two culverts at our Harson's Island Fire Station. So that was only half of that, of that job. We couldn't, with our budget, couldn't afford the, doing the whole scope of the whole road. So we split it up into two phases. So phase one of that, of that ditching project is done. And then I was at the road commission. If you recall last meeting, we passed a resolution to apply for a fifty fi- or a five, fifty-thousand-dollar grant if we go to do Fruit Road and Cemetery. The total bill was a hundred and eighty and that, our share would have been a hundred and thirty. Well, they came to me and we were talking and they're willing to do a fifty-fifty split with the township for that road if we so do decide. So it'll be ninety thousand and ninety thousand, or whatever the bid comes out to be.
Is that in the budget?
Yeah. Well, it'll be next year's budget.
Okay.
So that's good. And we did receive, I should say, the fire department received a ten-thousand-dollar grant from the state. It's going to be used for personal protection gear, help keep our firefighters safe. And good job on that, George. So that's all good news, too. Between that and that's fifty grand we saved on those two bullets. Water line extension on Columbine is going to probably start, just talked the last four or five weeks, is really dependent on the weather right now. And the Pearl Beach Pier project is moving forward. We're getting the handicapped lines painted on, on the end of the road and some signage in place. Waiting for DTE to supply power to the bathrooms so we can remove the portage on. And we're still waiting on fixing the payment. The contractor is supposed to come back. There's a, a big duck pond there every time it rains and they're going to have to take a section out, mill it out, and repave it. I was just down there, you were with me, weren't you, Cindy? We were talking to a few of the neighbors.
Uh-huh.
And I, I had other conversations with them and they'd like to see, which I'll talk to the DDA about, a wooden fence on the west side of, of our property between them and, and our property. And they like the wood fence that's there and they, they like that part. So I was going to get with the building inspector, see what we can do there. They'd rather have a wood fence than some type of landscaping. And they also get, I got a few complaints that when the fishermen are out on the dock, they have those little headlights, lamps, and they don't even know they're doing it, but it kind of distracts the people in the houses because it looks like flashlights shining all over and everything. So we're, they're wondering if we could maybe put a light out at the end, shut them down so they wouldn't really need to have those lights there, so.
Issue infrared.
Yeah. And, and then still working on the, on getting some cameras out there to, to help protect the, the area. But they're all pretty darn happy about everything. Joe, who was here a couple of meetings ago, he, he was, he shook my hand. He goes, "I love it. This looks great." So, so that's going good. Working on getting the spark grant finalized and for the park upgrades and getting that out for bid. The generator replacement for the police and office building is going, we're looking at scheduling that in the next couple, three weeks. They're going to have to turn the power off for a couple of days. So we're trying to work with DTE when we can do that. And I know the, the water department, you poured the footings and got the initial plumbing stubbed for the-
The plumbing's done, Lieutenant. We're going to form it up for the-
Yeah, for, for the, the pad for that, to get that ready for that generator. And let's see, we've been doing a lot of work on securing the two million dollars from the state for the San Souci area water treatment plant. And also working with Eagle on flood mitigation so we can utilize the site where we want to put the plant. And then also, we're getting ready to go out to bid this fall for our sewer lines rehab for our sewer collection. We all know that there's some issues there. And if you recall, the interceptor project, we're estimating it's going to cost one point, one million eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, or twenty-five thousand dollars. And we did get a million dollar grant to cover, go towards that. So actual Clay's portion, because we split it with IRA, will be four hundred and twelve thousand. And the rest of the rehab for all our whole collection system is going to be about three million dollars. So we're getting ready to put that out for bid here, hopefully in the next month or, or two at the latest. So that would be good. Working on updating the water ordinance. I sent a draft to the board. If you have any questions, I, actually Lance came to me today with a question. I got to shoot an email to them and see what their response is. And so that's going along pretty good. Been doing a lot of work with the county parks and rec for the beach park and facilitating them on getting their trust fund grant to purchase the house next door. And I know they want, they, I was helping them get a second appraisal done. And they're putting demolition of the two other houses there out for bid. And that should happen this fall or winter. And they're talking about construction for phase one. It will be starting this spring. And so that's great. So helping them out with whatever we can do. Let's see, this Saturday, we have our cover ban for Journey. Infinity and Beyond is going to be in the park, October twenty-first, from six to nine. The reports already are saying like forty, fifty percent chance of rain. And the ban's like two hours away, so we're going to have to call that here probably like Thursday if it's yea or nay. And actually, it's the same night as the Michigan, Michigan State football game. And we'll be working on getting a projector out there where we can stream the football game. I'm sure everybody's going to be rooting for Michigan State, right? I think I'm the only Spartan, I'm the only Spartan in this cookie, man. So, so that will be going on. Our police hunter safety class starts this week and that's full. We got fifty-plus people signed up for that. I know October twenty-eighth, the Algenac Lions Club is doing their trunk and treat at Algenac Lions Hall. It says it's from five to seven. And Halloween night, October thirty-first, the Methodist Church in Algenac are, are doing holy hallways, which is pretty cool. They, they put a lot of stuff in there downstairs where their classrooms are. And that goes from five to seven, October thirty-first. And Algenac Rotary is going to be doing the bonfire with free hot dogs on Smith's Field at seven o'clock. That's behind the DQ. So all kinds of fun and scary stuff going on. That's all I have. All right, moving right along. Public comments. Do we have any public comments?
Here we go again. Ninety thirty-two, Field Road, Karen Klingenberg. I find it very upsetting that I was here last meeting and the handicap family was here. And you addressed their issues today, but you didn't say nothing about mine. Where is my berm? When is the fence going to be put up? I mean, how many times, what, do the complaint forms expire? After so long, do you have to fill out another one? What, what's it going to take? What do I have to do? Where do I go? Y'all been out there, you seen all the Bob Boyer, all of you. Four months now.
Okay, I'll give you a call tomorrow.
For sure.
Yeah.
About everything, the berms, the fence, what's going on? Nothing?
I'll give you a call tomorrow.
That would be great, Artie. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none. No more public comments. Okay, moving right along to the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with a board meeting minutes of ten, two of twenty twenty-three. Board approved checks, EFT checks, checks cut in between meeting, and a notice for the resignation from the captain position and the fire department from C. McGuffin.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion?
I just had a question on the seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars for the San Souci wastewater treatment. Didn't we put together a special fund where we put thirty grand in to fund that so that we could, when we get our two million dollar grant in October, put it back there? But again, it's coming out of the general fund and not that one? Or did we do that after we did this? Because that's a big chunk of change, almost eight grand.
We do have that fund that will reimburse all the-
The auditors haven't created that, set it up in the ledger yet.
Okay.
So until it's set up, we can't, yeah. Once it's set up, we can transfer everything, but we can't do anything with it now.
I mean, so, I mean, the board agreed to set up that fund. Are you keeping track of everything? Do you know how much we are at this point yet or no?
It's in the ledger.
In the ledger, yeah.
It's in the ledger.
We don't have it off to a certain spot. We're going to have to look through the whole ledger to find it all or what? When we have to, because we, you know, it was promised it's going to come out of the two million and that's why we approved this thirty thousand dollar fund. So I'm just confused. I, I don't know if I should be keeping a running total and going through everything and keeping track of it or?
No, we have it in the ledger.
All right. Well, I'll just ask for an email and all that then later and then I'll keep track from here. All right, thank you.
Okay, anything else on the consent agenda? Hearing nothing. All in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Next we have the fire chief report. George, how are you?
Good. Good evening, everybody.
Hey, George.
Fire chief's report for September. I attended two meetings. One was the St. Clair Flats Association on Harson's Island. The other one was the St. Clair County Chiefs Association. I was appointed to the Mavis Committee, which is a mutual aid for the state and for local departments. So I'll be sitting on that committee. The department participated in two parades, Pied Henkel Boat Parade and also the Harson's Island Lions Club Parade and over Labor Day weekend. And the firefighters association also had their annual pancake breakfast, which was a good turnout. A lot of participation from the residents and local community. And we thank everybody for that. I attended MTA Emergency Service Seminar in Frankenmuth last month. And a couple of the guest speakers were the Michigan EMS Program's manager, Emily Baker. She was talking about paramedic program for the state. They're implementing a grant program where people can become paramedics and, under a grant, and receive funds for that and pay for the class. So they're implementing that. And also, the state fire marshal, Kevin Saltmeyer, and he was talking about training for firefighters. And then a chief, Bill Flatbush, from Presque Lisle Township Fire Department, he was talking about Part Seventy-four. That's our, what we follow by in purchasing bunker gear, doing ladder testing, host testing, purchasing trucks, SCBA's and that sort of thing. It's what we have to follow by along NFPA fifteen-hundred. I also attended a class in Muskegon, marine firefighting for land-based firefighters. Some of the topics we covered were to locate the pre-fire plan on a freighter and how to read them. And we also talked about how to set up a water supply on, on a large, on large lake vessel and the construction and layout of it. And some of the fire protection systems that they have on it, they do have some dry chem systems, they have some halon systems, they also have wet systems that you can, they can pump right out of the, out of the lake and keep a compartment fire safe or extinguish the fire. We did our pump testing last month. All vehicles passed their pump test and all vehicles are in service and both stations were manned.
Great. Anybody have any questions for chief? Is there a way that we can connect to the freighters to give them water supply?
We have to buy an adapter.
With water?
Yep, there's an adapter we have to buy. It's a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yep. We'll put something together and if we have it in the budget, we'll get it this year. If not, we'll get it for next year.
Interesting. Would you think they would carry their own as part of their mandates? Yeah.
Good question. I mean, it's something I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
Outside my knowledge base.
I mean, if they're in the South Channel, they're on fire. I just, I haven't gone far into Detroit.
By the time they stop, they'll probably be in the middle of the river.
Right, but.
Or in the middle of Lake St. Clair.
But yeah, no, that's one thing we always talked about and thought about. If a freighter has sinking or, or has a mechanical problem in the river, it caused a big problem for us. So.
Was the training just on large vessels? Yes.
Cool. All right, thanks a lot, chief.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, under new business, we have resolution twenty twenty-three twenty-nine, establish early polling location. This is, I'm sure Cindy's.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three twenty-nine to establish an early voting polling location.
Support.
Okay, motion support. Now, this is to allow us to partner with, I mean, specifically Algenac?
It allows us to hold an early voting.
Okay.
Location. And additionally, yes, to partner with Algenac so that we can share the costs of running that for nine days.
Yep. If you recall, the last, when was it passed? It was an amendment that-
Twenty-two.
Yeah, twenty-two. We have to, the polls have to be open nine days before the actual election day. And that puts the stress on clerks and, that covers actually two weekends before. We gotta have people here and pay them and everything to be open. So you can vote early. And it's part of figuring it out, I'm sure, this resolution.
Oh, I mean, every day they have to be open or just certain days? How's that work?
Nine days before the election.
Nine days before.
Every day.
Yep.
Even on a weekend. It's crazy.
So I'm sure it'll be run smooth here, but I, I question other, other places, so.
It's going to be a little crazy this year. I mean, there isn't a whole lot of guidance yet about it. Just, you have until October thirtieth to decide whether you're going to do a joint municipality or if you're going to take on the cost all on your own. Part of that is you have to have a separate tabulator. So not every municipality has a tabulator they can use. We have two of them for the AV counting board, so if we had to, we can eliminate one from the AV counting board to use for this. But obviously, this tabulator is going to be locked up for nine days plus through the election.
Don't dictate about the, about the state during elections.
By the proposal, yeah, that was passed in November of twenty-two.
Yep.
It was a blurb about this big on the ballot that led everyone to feel that we were just going to say, yes, you have to have ID for coming in to vote, where really it was about twelve pages of a lot of crazy things that nobody is quite sure how we're going to accomplish because there was no avenue for funding. There was no guidance as how we were supposed to make it happen. Us clerks can only be in one place at one time, although they think that we're going to be in three, so, at one time.
What happened to absentee voting? So I thought that was all about.
Yeah, that's forty-five days, but now we have an additional nine days that you can come in and you can actually physically put it in the tabulator now, so. And then that type, tabulator has to be locked and secured for every evening for nine days.
So even on-
So we may have to move a board meeting or two, whether it be us or Planning Commission or, we're not sure how, where we can set up, what the guidelines are for the setup, if it's the same as the polling locations. So it's still going to be worked out, but obviously voting comes before anything else, so.
We tried to work with the county where they, they talked about having like four or five over the county we all can participate in, but that didn't work out, so.
So you can set it up at the districts that we have individually?
No. No, it'll be one, one site here for any voter in Clay and any voter in Algenac.
And do you have to-
Basically do it here.
Mm-hmm. So the people in Algenac will come here to vote early if they so choose?
It's the presidential primary, right?
Yes.
So there won't be probably anything else on the ballot to vote for, maybe, right?
I don't know. I'll let you know in December.
Okay. It's interesting.
All right, any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, next we have.
I'm sorry, just wanted to ask one more question. So do, would you need maybe more volunteers? Should we be trying to get volunteers to help with the voting? Because normally there's just a couple of people there, right? But now you have to have them there for nine days. Can the public help?
Yeah, anybody can sign up to be a, an election poll worker. We have, we have a list of them.
All right. Sorry.
Now we have a resolution celebrating Joanne Shirkey's contribution to Clay Township. It says, oh, let's see, whereas Township trustees of Clay Township desire to convey to you, Joanne, an expression of appreciation and grateful acknowledgement for the valued service rendered by you to the township for over forty years with the Clay Township Fire, Clay Township or Clay Township Island Fire Department, member of the planning and zoning boards and trustees and board of trustees for the Township of Clay for the past consecutive eight years. I know she did other terms, too, is that. You have given generously your time, efforts, and dignified, faithfully and professional manner. And the Township trustees of Clay Township sincerely appreciate- manner, and the Township Trustees of Clay Township sincerely appreciate the worthwhile contributions you have made towards material development, communal welfare, safety, and quality of life for the, for Clay Township. And on this occasion, over the 40 years of service, you are retiring to start your next challenging and exciting chapter of life. Therefore, be it resolved, Clay Township Trustees of the Township of Clay, sincere congratulations expressed for the occasion of your official township retirement." I also...
Was that a motion?
Yes.
So moved.
Does someone want to do a second?
Yep, I just did.
Okay. I also received this for Joanne, and this was passed by the State House of Representatives and the State Senate, signed by our State Senator Kevin Hurtel and Jade DeBoyer, our State Representative. Show and tell. And this is a little, it says, "Special Tribute to Joanne Shirkey. Let be known that we are celebrating the accomplishments of Joanne Shirkey, who has been serving her community of Clay Township for the past 40 years. Joanne has, has dutifully served on the Planning Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, and Board of Appeals, Zoning Board of Appeals, Board of Appeals, and the Board of Trustees. Joanne served as, served the township. She championed and favored creating policies such and starting recycling, building strong infrastructure, improving public safety. And she was also a big fan of Parks and Rec. Joanne served on the Harson's Island Volunteer Fire Department from 1978 to 1984 and held both ranks of Captain and First Assistant Chief." Boy, too bad we don't have her now, right, George? Joanne was the Dean of Students, Athletic Director, Teacher, and Coach at Bishop Gallagher High School from 1961 to 1984. As coach, she led the cheerleading team to two state championships, 1976 and '77, and the season that led the women's basketball to a state championship in 1977. In addition, Joanne also coached track, field, tennis, softball, bowling. Joanne was also the head softball coach at Wayne State University in 1977. She was named Detroit Free Press Coach of the Year in 1977 and the National High School Athletic Coaches Association Coach of the Year for the whole country, 1978, and was inducted to the Catholic League Hall of Fame in 1981. On Harson's Island, Joanne owned her own excavating business where she operated dump trucks, bulldozers, and backhoes. She was the first woman deckhand at Champions Auto Ferry and delivered the mail on Harson's Island. She served many years as a board member on the Harson's Island-St. Clair Flats Association. Joanne always had a love for horses and enjoyed teaching children how to barrel race at Josie's Ranch in Texas. As a special tribute, therefore, this document is signed and dedicated honoring the contributions and accomplishments of a great Michigander." So also, also, the St. Clair County Commissioners are gonna pass one similar October 19th. And the Senate, the US Senate, and Gary Peters is passing a similar resolution. And in fact, that one's already passed and I think they're gonna deliver it to me Friday. And we're waiting for the US House to do theirs here in the next week with Lisa McLean. So we're gonna have ours plus one, two, three more. And then, once I get them all together, I'm gonna go down and present them. I'll let everybody know when.
Awesome.
So she's well-deserving.
Indeed.
So we have a motion.
Yep, I supported it.
And support. So let's do roll call.
Kristy Hiltonan.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Very yes, yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, absolutely yes. Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Yep, she was our coach.
Mentor.
Yep.
Our board historian.
I don't know, she always come in my office and she'd just say, "Artie, just don't worry about that. Just do it. Just get it done. Get it done." She'd just tell me, "Get it done." Okay. All right. Next, we have General Obligation Bond Payment for $63,945.
Make a motion to approve the General Obligation Bond Payment, the amount of $63,945 from various accounts.
Support. All right, motion and support. Any discussion?
This is our, basically our payment on our almost $5 million of debt? Is that what it is? Our interest or... 4.575 million?
It's for our bonds, right?
Yes.
For our MERS.
Correct.
Yes.
All the different MERS for the retirement pensions and what else?
Yep, which saves us lots of money.
Who's, what, what's it all for? All of our bonds or all pensions? It's all pension stuff?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
All right. Do we have a motion? Support? Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hiltonan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have a Word System Annual Maintenance Agreement. It's budgeted, line item 207932, and this is for our nine, our non-emergency phone calls, right?
Both.
Both.
This is both radio traffic and...
Okay, records radio traffic and phone calls. For $4,776.
I'll make a motion to approve the Police Word Systems Annual Maintenance for $4,776.40 from line 207932.
Support. Okay, motion and support. Any discussion or questions?
That's our annual...
Yep, maintenance for... Something we gotta have. Okay, hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And next, we have our Police Taser Replacement on a Five-Year Plan. We're gonna need a volunteer to be tased. Do we have any?
They were telling me it was you.
Yeah.
Just kinda surprised it's already been five years since we first got into this program. And it, it worked real well for us. The thing that's nice about the program, before they offered this program, it seemed like it really was costing us money a lot because, one, for training, we had to buy the cartridges, buy the batteries, buy the equipment, and if something went wrong with one of them, which always did, we're paying for that. So since they ended up coming out with this, definitely saves us the money because of any of the maintenance, all the training end of it, everything that comes with it. It's all a package that keeps going all year long. So if there's any issues, any problems, Axon Taser takes care of the issues for us. It's worked real well the last five years. The one thing that, that Sam here from Axon is gonna demonstrate is a virtual reality training, which we all know, especially in today's world, the way things are right now, the biggest thing is, is less lethal force and what we can do as far as de-escalation and taking the least lethal force that we can. With that, taser, let's face it, pretty much has raised the bar on that. Along with that comes the training for our guys and the use of the equipment itself. And with that, Sam's gonna demonstrate here for you. I'm gonna turn this projector on, get that going, just how this works, and it's pretty impressive. I have not seen it in person, I've only seen the video, so it's first time for me too, but it's pretty impressive. Along with the new taser here, the tasers that we were using were maximum distance, what, 24-foot pole?
They're 25-foot cartridges, but 40 feet is the maximum, really.
Now, the new ones, they're talking, what, up to 45 feet? Not to mention, you have capability of 10 shots with this, which is huge, especially, let's face it, trying to position yourself, especially if somebody's charging you or anything like that. I think it's gonna be just a night and day difference between what we're carrying right now and the new technology that they have. I'm looking forward to actually seeing the use of this, but the technology, let's face it, it changes every year. And the nice part of this is, as things upgrade and that, they will upgrade with us. The other thing this comes with is the Evidence.com program, which is a cloud-based program. When the guys come in, and let's say there's an incident or at the end of every shift, they come in, they have to put these in a docking station that automatically uploads anything that taser did during their shift, right down to they have to come in and they have to test this taser, make sure everything's functioning properly. It records all this. So if there's any question in court or anything like that, this does all of that for us and it's something that cannot be tampered with. So if there was a deployment of the taser, it's gonna record everybody of that in real time. And it's something that is held in a cloud base, secured, so if there's any, ever any issues, we're never gonna run into problems as far as anything evidentiary. So the program that they put together really, you know, helps us out as far as the, if there's anything in a litigious situation, so. With that being said, I'm gonna appreciate it.
Does she have to connect to?
So what I think would be best is, I'm gonna show a video that just explains how Axon Virtual Reality Training helps officers train with the taser. And then I also would like to touch on another portion of the product, which is the Community Engagement Training. So a lot of law enforcement, from conversations I've had with law enforcement, say that they do an incredible job at training for the 1%. Your shoot or no-shoot scenarios, use of force situations, excuse me, but what about the other calls for service that officers receive on a day-to-day basis? Ones that involve individuals who are in mental crisis? How do you de-escalate those? How do you recognize an individual in mental crisis and how do you provide a more, how do you provide the right resources for a more favorable outcome? So those are the two main things with our product that Axon is really taking to heart to develop. One thing I wanna touch on with the Community Engagement Training, which I'll show you what that looks like, and the awesome thing is I can set this up here in a couple minutes and each one of you can try it out. It's so much fun.
That's why you're at the end of the...
Yes, so we have all the time. You guys can hop in the headset, we can go through the simulator portion, you guys can also go into the Community Engagement Training and do one of those modules. Unfortunately, I won't be able to cast what's on the headset through a projector, so you guys will just be able to hop in and just experience it for yourself, so.
Yeah, just real quick, you know, I've got Sergeant Smith here. He's our guru with the tasers. He's done all the research, all the homework, all the late work and everything on this, and he's done a just fantastic job of putting this together. This has been a work in progress for the last few months now, so.
All right, so I'm gonna show this video. This is our new trailer that we have, and the awesome thing about this is that we have just recently upgraded our technology. Let me try to switch my displays here.
Hold on. Close.
Is there a power setting on those?
No.
It's all or nothing, huh?
It is what it is. It's not like the dog.
So actually with the Taser 10, you know, they say 50,000 volts. So what they've done with the Taser 10 is, if you have a good connection, it's actually gonna reduce that voltage, and that's supposed to help out with the recovery for the subject that's been taken, so.
Now, I've got plenty of people have asked me, you know, have you been shot with the taser? I said, "No." "How do you know?" "Then what it feels like?" I says, "I have not been shot with this either," and I go, "All right."
That's fair.
The best way to describe it is that, we call it neuromuscular incapacitation, and it's a giant muscle contraction, so your entire body locks up. Wherever the probes hit is typically where those muscles lock up and...
Where's James when he needs it?
The nice thing about the Taser 10 is that with the former Taser models, wherever the subject were to be hit, and they would fall, a lot of injuries would occur from the fall, so with the Taser 10, you have the ability to create your own spread, so you choose where those probes hit. And in more cases than not, you can go thigh to thigh, which locks up, the individual can then fall and catch themselves. So it really is eliminating a lot of injury as well. So, okay, let me play this video for you guys. Super awesome. I might need a different adapter. I might go in and out, but let's see here. One second.
I'm gonna have to put in a HDM cord in here.
I'm gonna hold the cord, I don't know if that's...
Let me try. Sometimes if you add a...
Like, is she running a Mac?
It's a Mac, yeah.
Seems like something...
I put my Mac in there.
It might be that. I don't know if it's a Mac OS.
Were there a lot of competitors that you had to compare to?
Basically, Axon is the only company that I know of in the United States that makes tasers.
Oh, okay.
Anything that's reliable or that law enforcement would use.
All right. The video is ready. Here we go. It's really great. We have ranges here that are dedicated towards skills and drills, so working on the efficiency of the taser, being comfortable using it, working on accuracy, working through a lot of limitations with the prior taser, which a lot of the percentage of misses were just one misses in general because you're having to aim two probes to a target where now you have one probe that comes out at a time. So misses, we worked on that with this new taser. Also clothing disconnect. So how do you maneuver around different types of clothing? With the Taser 10, you have the ability to do that. What I have here is specific skills and drills ranges that you can actually work on those things in the headset. Nice thing here is you get unlimited trigger pulls, you're not spending money on cartridges. This system is an all-in-one system. Everything you see here on the table is all that it is. Other VR products that you see out there, you need a dedicated space, you have to have a complex system, PCs, it's an entire setup, but ours is incredibly easy to set up, it just takes a couple of minutes. Each one of our scenarios are less than 15 minutes, so you really can take the advantage of any downtime. So when these gentlemen are training individuals, they can just have them hop in the headset when they have 10 to 15 minutes of downtime. They can get in there, they can train on the taser at any time that they want, all year round, and practice it so that that is the non-lethal op... year round, and practice it so that that is the non-lethal option that they're comfortable to use. And so, um, those are the main benefits of our simulator portion. What you won't be able to see today is our use of force decision-making exercises. Those are coming, but those will be in an environment, you'll have a campus environment, we have a hospital, we have a motel, we have a bunch of different environments that they'll be able to de-escalate situations in and work on those as well. The last thing I'd like to mention before I let you guys hop in and have some fun is that Axon is the first company to get a virtual reality training course certified and accepted through IDOLIST. Have any of you guys heard about IDOLIST? Do you have any idea what it is? So, IDOLIST is a nationally recognized company and they make sure that law enforcement training meets or exceeds the accepted standards of training for police training. And so, state by state, they have different acceptances for it, but our product is the first one that is accepted by this, so for the state of Michigan specifically, um, you guys will be able to take this to your state through IDOLIST's National Certification Program and submit it to them for credit towards training hours. So, this is really big, it's huge, it's the first one and it's the, I mean, there's many more to come, so as more gets accepted and, um, certified, it's just gonna be a big game changer for law enforcement training, so. Do you guys have any questions so far about any of taser virtual reality training?
I'm wondering with this training, if we can get a little help from our insurance companies like they do for other programs we do, we have, you know, I mean, I can ask.
It's worth talking to.
I can ask.
Absolutely.
Have you, I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Sam.
Sam. Have you ever heard of any municipalities getting a kickback from their insurance companies?
I actually haven't.
Okay.
Um, if you guys figure that out. Yeah, let me know, that'd be great. That'd be really awesome.
I was just curious, 'cause there's, you know, training's a huge element in today's, today's world.
Yeah, absolutely, it really is.
Well, and I am currently working with both of the chiefs for a training spreadsheet that shows, you know, where they were on July first of twenty-two versus where they are July first of twenty-three, what training they've done in between, um, which is gonna be huge for our work bins comp and our insurance company to be able to document that this is, you know, the training that we do and that they've received, so.
We did hold our first Mac computer training yesterday at high school, which went very well.
Did it?
So, we'll have another one this Sunday, yeah, went fantastic.
Good.
Guy's got a couple of moves, but.
Uh-oh.
So, we're actually paying, believe, the twenty thousand for the training and then eighty-some thousand for the twenty tasers, right?
No, it's twenty, it costs us twenty thousand here, it includes the training, includes everything, the tasers, includes all equipment, everything.
Well, right, I'm looking at the difference between the two quotes. You've got one without virtual reality and one with. So, the one without is eighty-eight thousand, the one with is a hundred and eight thousand. It says a hundred and three here, but.
That's a tax.
With taxes, it's a hundred and eight. We don't pay tax.
We don't pay tax.
Oh, okay, so, 'cause the other one had tax in it too. So, the difference between the two is the twenty grand, which is the virtual reality training.
And they do the financing with us and we don't have to pay that upfront, oh, that upfront, and it's also, uh, there's no interest with that.
It also has.
For the training and the lasers?
Yeah, and there's twenty of them, right?
Correct.
You're getting twenty? And all your training cartridges and maintenance.
Training, any cartridges, if any duty cartridges have been spent, they replace them, any batteries that go bad, they replace them, everything with them, everything's covered under a maintenance program.
We have sixteen usually officers on the road, is that right, or?
Well, during the week, no, we got over eighteen, but we keep two cartridges there in case one goes down.
Right.
We won't have it no more, so that's why we do that.
Let's have one at the station, probably.
Yes.
So, twenty's the right amount?
Yes.
Also with the refreshes, so, you know, the tech for the tasers are refreshed, so it's going to be virtual reality, if that has waymarked through the contract, any refreshes can be done if we've upgraded the technology, just pop in and swap it out. Um, something else with the community engagement training, so the exercises for de-escalating an individual in mental crisis, we come out with new content, bi-monthly, so we're always coming out with new stuff. Once you're in contract, you guys receive that and no additional cost, so they would be getting all new things that we would be coming out with, no upgrading price or anything, so we are just constantly pushing out new stuff, creating new ranges, creating new environments, and so we're just, you know, we've fairly scratched the surface, so we're just gonna keep climbing and keep adding things, so. I'm just gonna set this up, it's gonna take me a couple of minutes and then whoever's my first, first person wants to hop in? You guys can hold on a little bit.
Hey, Sam, I got a question for you before I set that up. I'm looking at, you know, this is a, pages and pages of information, so I'll just cut right to the chase. What doesn't this include?
What doesn't?
Yeah, what are the add-ons that potentially be down the road? What doesn't this proposal include?
Great question. The one thing it doesn't include is say that we were to create a new attachment, so our roadmap for attachments is a lung eventually, or a baton, or a C spray, anything that's gonna fully complete the duty belt. I don't know what that looks like, we haven't created it yet, but I know that that is on the roadmap, so that would be the only thing that's not included in there. So, say that a year later, we have a lung done and they want to get that, it may be an additional cost, but that would be the only thing that's not included.
Okay, so do we own this equipment or are we leasing them?
You would own the hardware.
Okay.
If you want to buy it, it's yours to keep. The, the content is subscription-based, but that's already included in the contract.
And repairs are included and, right, okay.
Are you trading any old?
Yes.
And there's a, how much is that?
Is that in here?
That breakdown, they don't have that in there, but, um, I could get that if you need it, but that was what, everything was included within that quote. The problem is the ones that we have right now are obsolete, anything happens to them, they're, they don't even repair them now, so.
So, when you trade them in, they're not really worth much?
They're only good for five years anyhow.
Yeah, they, yeah, so.
Take care of the disposal or the retro.
Probably not even a couple grand.
Take them off your hands.
Yeah, you definitely want the liability and if something happened, they got out there, it's a problem.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Are we, uh, ready to make a decision?
Well, I think we, yeah, we need to get through our agenda.
Right.
We need to wrap up the meeting.
Yeah, and then.
And then go there?
Yeah.
What do you think?
That's what I was thinking.
Okay.
So, we have motion? No, not yet.
We do not have a motion.
Wanna make a motion?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll make a motion. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the police, the police taser replacement five-year plan at one hundred and three thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars deriving from line item two oh seven dash nine seven zero. It's a taser purchase, twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-eight.
Support. Okay, motion and support, any discussion? I have a question for Sam. Is there any other programs that we can put in with this hardware for like shoot, don't shoot, um, you know, that, that, different scenarios?
Uh, help me understand what you mean by a program.
Uh, with your simulator.
You mean like transitioning from your handgun and going to the taser?
Yes. I thought you, I thought you said something about that.
Yeah, training.
That, that will be available, it's definitely a product we've had. We currently have been upgrading our technology and so once we've upgraded the firearm, 'cause right now we just have the taser that's been upgraded.
Yeah.
So, once firearm is ready, those use of force decision-making exercises that you're talking about will be available. So, we, we have them with our old technology, but it's in revamp right now, so.
Okay.
Yes, those will be, those will be included.
I like it.
I see the rate goes up a little each year, is that why, the reason why it's not like the same every year? Goes from nineteen one sixty-nine in twenty twenty-four to twenty-two four in twenty twenty-eight.
With that, I mean, if, if there's a way that you guys prefer that to.
Oh, I just was curious why, yeah.
It can be the same, sometimes agencies or states like to have it a little bit cheaper at year one, it just depends on how the budget goes for you all, so we have a lot of flexibility with that if you would like that to change.
The bottom line is still one oh three eight.
Yeah, right.
Yep, over five years, yeah.
This was, I mean, we have to make sure we get it in the budget each year, 'cause we're not putting a hundred and three in it right now, we're just putting a nineteen, right? Okay.
Any other discussion or questions?
No, not for me.
Hearing none, I'll, uh, roll call, please.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Next, uh, we have board member comments. Cindy, do you have anything? Other than figuring out the elections?
Um.
Changes all the time?
No, I don't, I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, John?
I don't have any idea.
No? Maureen?
Thanks to George for getting us ten thousand dollars for the fire department, appreciate that and everybody have a safe Halloween out there.
I have a planning commission meeting on the twenty-fifth, and I have one question concerning the agents. What about animals?
You can use them on animals.
Yes. And do animals? And you know why I brought that up, both the Elgin Act, uh.
Yes, we, and we have the best, we have used them in the best.
Chris, you got a PSA for us?
Well, it's a little bit early, I'd say clean your gutters and clean all the leaves out, but it's, man, there's a lot of leaves going on. Um, I got a couple of quick things. One, uh, I just wanna express individually my gratitude for Joanne Shirkey. When I first was elected onto this board, she was, uh, she was very, um, patient in, in explaining how things went, she explained, um, our order of operations, she explained Robert's rules, um, and how to craft, um, your concerns, um, and, and there's a lot to learn when you're a new board member and she was very patient with that process. And I guess that's probably why it made such a, her such a good teacher over the years and such a good coach. But I learned a lot from her, um, not only about current activities in the, in our community, but also about historical events that had taken place in our community and why we arrived at certain decisions in certain places within the township. Um, so she was really, uh, for me, she was really a driving force, um, behind a lot of the, the positive community events, um, and I'm very grateful, um, to have made her acquaintance and I'm, and I'm thankful that she took the time, um, to help train me up, uh, to, to make me a better board member. So, I'll always be grateful for her. Uh, secondly, um, there is something that I wanted to bring up to the board that, for consideration, um, a couple of months ago, um, going back to last winter, there was a couple of times the ferry got shut down and, uh, we had some people stranded out there and there was discussion of, um, perhaps converting the township hall into some type of a warming center in the event of, uh, an emergency-type situation, so, um, I hadn't forgotten about that and, and that's gonna start to pick up a little bit of steam and I just wanna make the board aware of some things that I'm gonna be working on, possibly presenting in, in the very near future, okay?
Okay. And you should probably get with Chief Rose, we do have cots and.
Yeah.
Things are ready.
Yeah, it's just, it was, I think there's probably, uh, uh, you know, something we can do as a community, um, in those oddities that, that the ferry does get shut down.
Yeah, on that note, just to let you know that, you know, the Elgin Act Lions Club over on Mill Street, also is a warming center for both communities.
Fantastic.
We can coordinate between that, what you're just talking about, and make sure that that's in the loop, and that's all.
Great. Mark, I'm gonna call you on that, okay?
Sure.
We can, we may work together on that one. That's all I have, Mr. Supervisor. Okay, Kristi?
I don't have anything.
No? I got a couple of things, uh, as far as, yeah, Joanne, well, she's very special, I mean, she's been a friend of my family's, personal friend for years and, uh, um, it, it's amazing. I was just at a meeting today in Port here and someone came up to me, "Do you know Joanne Shirkey?" And I said, "Well, certainly I do." And she, "Oh, boy, you know, we, she, she was a teacher of mine." I, I meet people that, she touched their lives all the time, all the time. They, uh, come up to me and they ask me if I know her and this and that and, uh, I mean, it, it's, she was, she's an incredible person, so that's why we're, uh, doing all this. I was contacted today by a, a Eagle Scout that wants to do a project in our park, um, so if you guys have, I got a couple ideas, but I'll be working with them on that. And, um, let's see, the Saturday too is, uh, event, uh, Halloween in the NAC, uh, at Smith Field, it's, uh, Oc-, or, yeah, the Saturday, the twenty-first, goes from noon to four, that's a, a good event and well-attended, and, uh, just wanted to tell everyone, be safe out there, Halloween, there's a lot of ghosts and goblins running around and, and scary things out there, things that go bump at night, so, uh, be careful, be aware and have fun, it's a great holiday. Other than that, one more motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, let's get out of here, thank you for coming, everybody.